Years and especially in these last couple, Steve has really been a phone a friend if I didn't understand something. So I appreciate that. And John, John, we have new lighting in the basement. Thanks to your help with with the House of Delegates. I appreciate that.
I was able to utilize that.
And HD can cook up a mean burger for for our events. And I just appreciate you bringing your team out for that. Eddie, safety. We've been doing a lot in the safety realm, getting all of our clubs safer. And Randy Lilly has been a big part of that. So I want to thank you all for that. And Jim, are you coming to the dance next weekend?
That's my plan, if I'm allowed.
Yeah, absolutely. It's going to be back at the Boys and Girls Club. The Martinsburg Sunrise Rotary has hosted a dance for Boys and Girls Club since.
Almost since its inception.
Yeah, I think, well, I think the dance was, it came out of the first, one of the first leadership Berkeley classes. And they said, what, you know, what kind of event can we do for Boys and Girls Club? And that President's Day Dance was the thing. So, so why am I here today talking to you? It's really about looking at our, our programming here in Berkeley County. And I based our ask on, on 50 children and a membership of 300. And I got the numbers today. And we're actually at 423 in Berkeley County, number of of youth that are coming to the club. So, so really what I'm looking at is, you know, how much does it cost for one child to come to Boys and Girls Club for one year? And that number, and I, I calculated that by like, what, what a daily rate might look like for the after school and what it would look like for the summer. In our daily program, kids are there Monday through Friday from our first group gets in about 2:45, 3:00 PM, right after school, and they can stay until 7:00 PM. While they're at the club, they get dinner, snack, homework help. They, they learn how to get along with their peers. You know, they can, they can start disagreeing at school. And it's really hard when you're structured and you're trying to educate children. So that makes life difficult for, for teachers and educators. So the beauty in the club is when they come to the club, you know, we talk it out, we figure it out, because you have to work with a lot of people in this world that you might not always agree with. So you have to figure out, how do you get to consensus? And that's something that we, we strive to do every day in the club, is teach kids how to get along in the real world. Because, you know, they're not going to have moms, dads supports, once they reach adulthood. So if they can learn those skills early on, by the time they're adults, they, they can navigate this world. And hopefully, they're going to sit where you're sitting someday. So you always wonder, okay, really, how much impact do you get at Boys and Girls Club? Kids just go there and play ball and hang out, right? Well, that's not the case. So this is, this is a cool story, because this young lady, I got to watch her grow up. At eight years old, Emily came to Boys and Girls Club. And that's a picture of her with her dad in the middle when she's tiny. At eight, actually, she came at six, but at eight, dad was out shoveling snow and had a major coronary. And mom's trying to revive him while Emily's on the phone with 911, trying to get him help. And he didn't make it. But he did make sure that she had the Boys and Girls Club in her life when he was still here. And thankfully, mom continued that practice. And Emily grew up through the club. She has led courses with kids in how to be a better friend. When I first met Emily, she was, she was probably 10 or 11. And she's like, I'm going to save lives when I get big. And the really cool story is, she never veered too far off from that, that thought. So Emily graduates from high school. She's our Youth of the Year. She goes on a national TV show, or radio show, excuse me, to help just advocate for being a better friend to your peers. And from there, she goes to college. Just in December, she graduated with her BSN. And she's now working at WVU Healthcare. So that's a local product, who grew up through the club, who learned to set some goals, and who had the encouragement to stick with it. And now she's giving back in this community. And that's value added benefit, right here at home. And that's our goal. We want the young people that grow up through the club. I mean, we wish them well wherever they go in life. So whether they stay, or whether they go to another community, we know we've invested well in them. So, so the exciting part is Emily's going to be our speaker, our alumni speaker at our Youth of the Year Dinner, our Champion for Youth Dinner on April 24. So mark your calendar. We'll be sure to send invites for that as well. And we will honor, honor someone in our community who's made a significant contribution to youth. I'm still getting nominees in. So Steve, look for your email. Steve was one of our Stephanie Pearson Champion for Youth honorees a couple years ago. And all the past honorees get to vote. So they get to determine who's that person going to be this year. So next, the first part of next week, you'll get that. Okay, so that's only part of what's happening at Boys and Girls Club. We've got some bigger plans. Hopefully, by the city council meeting next week, they will have their third and final reading to transfer the building at 105 West John to the Boys and Girls Club. So we've entered, we, we sent a letter of intent to take ownership. And the goal for us is, it's a big lofty one. It's a $14 million project. But we're planning to extend out the back of the, of the club, and add on to, to the back and create a gymnasium, a dining hall that will serve between 150 and 200 people. And then turn our upstairs gymnasium into performing arts space where we can host speakers who might want to come in. Or if the kids want to do a play or a dance program, they can, they can do that. It definitely would be a smaller practice stage in comparison to the Apollo. But they would have a space where they could practice that. And who knows, maybe we partner with the Apollo and put on a full scale production. But, but it creates that one stop shop right there at the community. And not only could it be used for the club, but also a community hub. So if there's a downtown event that, you know, a, a group is looking, looking for a place where it could be hosted, it could happen there. So, let's see. Am I holding, now I'm holding the third floor. Okay. On in Mark's right hand there. Initially, we thought we could put parking down there, but the elevation is not going to support that. So that whole space is going to extend out. We can add a couple more classrooms if needed, but we'll definitely have plenty of space to host a dinner or supper, or, or, and, and also for our children to eat. Right now, we go, we work in three different rounds of serving dinner. And that would create an opportunity that we could serve the entire group at one setting. The current club is going to become a state of the art teen center. So teenagers, you know, right now, the club is split between the younger kids and the older ones. There's a small faction of teenagers that we have right now, and we have a small space for them. But this would create one whole floor that is just theirs. They can key in, they'll have an adult that's, that's there to support them. But they can learn workforce development, or workforce exploration programming. We utilize a VR headset program right now with, and we work with the Career One Stop. And, and so they'll have access to that. They'll have video screens that they can learn gaming, or maker space areas where they can learn to create. In the next floor up, that is where we, you, you notice more of the expansion with the gymnasium. At that, at the main floor level, that's where we're going to enter from Queen Street for the front entrance, as opposed to John Street. So we'll have an entrance that comes right in. It's actually pretty solid in, in construction. So we're going to leave it alone. There are small learning spaces where young people have an opportunity to work in small groups and tutoring sessions. We also have a quiet space. Sometimes those little guys come in, and they have some pretty big emotions. And they need a space where it's quiet, that, that they can sit and have an adult work them, help them work through whatever challenges they have. And then plenty of game room space where they can come in, play games, and, and enjoy their friends. And then. So right now, our administrative offices are off site. Because I just wanted to make sure we have plenty of space for the young people that are coming to the club. So this would allow us to bring our administrative offices in, in part of the current, where the current gymnasium is now. And then create a queuing area where there'll be an elevator. Board meetings, our board members can look down and say, yeah, this is why I'm here. This is the mission, and this is why it's important. So that's, that's our excitement. So why do kids come to the club? Well, it might not always be about a new, new basketball or piece of sporting equipment, or, you know, necessarily what it looks like. Because kids have been walking through the doors of the club since, you know, since the 70s, really, well, 60s, really. They're coming for two things, really. It's their friends, and the adult mentors who are there to help them excel in life. Did any of y'all ever come to the club when you were younger? Your alumni. Anybody else? HD, did you ever come to the club? Oh, okay.
I think I've been there once.
Okay.
I was a little bit older than in high school, but yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. If, if there wasn't a Boys and Girls Club, would you have been there? Nope. Because it wouldn't have been there. So I mean, I think that's, I think that's what we need to really stress at, at our core. Club's been there for generations and generations. I, I want this to be, not my legacy, I want this to be the community's legacy. So that we can say 50 years from now, wow, you know, it's still there, it's still thriving, it's still going well. We've had some pretty significant donations. We had a congressional appropriation that received bipartisan support. Because that's how you got to get it done. It's, it's not about party affiliation, it's about people affiliation. And if we look at children and say, okay, we can do this because this is important for the next generation, then it can happen. So Senators Mansion in Capitol made it happen with a congressional appropriation. The governor put in some of that funding as well, when Governor Justice was in office. And, you know, and we're still seeking, we're still trying to figure out, how does this work? It's my hope that we can break ground sometime in 2027, and get this project started. So we'll, we'll see. You know, you got to put your, put your money where your mouth is. So I have to make sure that the money is there. But I think our kids deserve that. I think we need a lot more Emilys in this world. And we're doing our part to make it happen. I just need everybody else to, to help us reach that. So you have any questions?
I do.
Yes, sir.
So $14 million is what you need to do your project. Where are you at right now?
5.3. And John, correct me if I'm wrong. I, I want to make sure I understood correctly. Is there, is there some state matching dollars for congressionally appropriated projects to help with that? Or does, is that dependent upon whichever?
Depending on the administration.
Okay.
But I think Justice Administration gave you.
One.
One million.
But that was from his, that was not from that particular. It was from the contingency fund. Because I had another, I actually had two private donors who put in a million. So I matched it with that. In hopes.
How much was your congressional?
Two. So right now, we're going through the environmental study. I just got the contract. And Bushy Fightmoren is our, our architect. So they've given me the proposal for the, for the environmental. So that's step one. We have to have the environmental before we can get the CDS money. And boy, am I learning. This is, I never thought, Steve, I'm like you. I thought, I'm gonna go, I'm gonna go work with kids. That's, that's going to be my, my stage in life.
You have to have the additional, do you have to have the additional 8.5 or 8.7 that you need to get to 14 before you can start in 2027? Or can you start?
That remains to be seen. We're working with, with the Capitol Campaign Committee, and I have to rely on their guidance. So, so I guess to be continued. I'll find that out. But you want to help with that, too?
Well, I mean, just with changing administrations, money comes and money goes. So that, you know.
Yep.
We all know that's part of it.
Right. So I, you know, I, I just, I hope that we, as, as a community, can really see the value in it. Because it's, I mean, it's not just any one channel of money. I mean, it's really going to take an entire community, even, I mean, beyond, beyond governmental funds as well. So, so if you all want to jump behind this on a personal level, too, you know, we'd be grateful for that as well.
Hey, anybody else have any other questions for? All right, man.
Thank you so much. It's always fun coming in and chatting with y'all. I appreciate it. Take care.
Good to see you too.
Good story too.
We appreciate you. You gonna be at the dance?
I'm gonna be a pin plate.
Oh, I'll be there. Oh, it's next Saturday, next Saturday?
It's next Saturday.
Valentine's Dance, is that what it is? Sunrise Rotary.
And if you, I can pass him a link if anybody's interested in coming.
Me and Sally will be there.
Well, I know the DJ's pretty okay.
I know that guy. Yeah, he's all.
You have any requests? Try and make them in the 50s.
That's the genre.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So make sure you wear like your white t-shirt and your, your, your jeans and.
I don't have a poodle skirt.
You don't have to wear a poodle skirt.
Please don't.
Do you have one of those black leather jackets?
He can wear his tuxedo at any time.
I was thinking the same thing.
Please don't get them started. I'm trying to stay on schedule.
Thank you.
Bye bye.
Okay, Mark, you're up next, bro. Mark Jordan.
You'd be offended if I take my jacket off. I didn't think you would be. So thank you.
Me and Steve were sweating gravy.
We could, we could save $50,000 a year if we turned the heat down. I've been preaching that since I've been on the commission.
Sweating gravy.
It's okay. Well, good afternoon. It's a pleasure to see everybody here and some new faces. Used to call you Delegate Hardy, so.
Good to see you. It's good to see you.
Absolutely. Fantastic. Some good things. It's, I'm not here to ask for money. You know, we get our hotel motor tax, and everything is good.
One of our favorites coming.
Absolutely. I try, I try. We're all about tourism, and tourism is a fun thing for us. And it's a fun thing for us to do for, for people visiting our community. Some of the things that we've done this past year, we've focused a lot on our mid Atlantic region, which is what we usually do. We've partnered with a group advertising company that has access to numbers that we don't have access to. We can fine tune our marketing. And go to the places that people are really interested in here. So we've been doing that. We've been doing a lot of our ads, arm print still. We're pulling back from that a bit this year because we saw our numbers, our digital ad numbers go up quite a bit substantially. We're going to put a little bit more money into digital ads and YouTube videos. Actually, Stacy brought some of our, some of our kids down for our most recent YouTube video. Grass Farm Park, where they learned how to geocash, and they learned how to do fish be throws. And so had a great time. It was a great time being with the kids. And some other things that we've done, we've partnered with some of the groups, the Film Office down in Charleston, and HD, I'm sure, has spoken to it. We had a good, I think, I think we had a good representation of Berkeley County and West Virginia in Las Vegas this past year, beginning of November. We had a great setup. I think it's one of our better setups that we've had. Because it was more like a trade show setup for us. It was our option to pick that, and we did. With the state. And so people had to come right by us. And so there was a lot of introductions, a lot of interaction. And I've seen, it looks like some of the people that we talked to are, are still interested in our area. No, HD has talked to some people, worked with Jefferson County, and trying to make it a regional thing for us. Because they don't care where they shoot, they just want the location. So we're working well with our partners there. That's ongoing. And it seems to be a good thing for us, and for the state, and for our area. Hopefully, to bring filming back to our area, which brings in a lot of money, a lot of business to our local economy. And some of the things that we're doing for this next year, if you look at our budget, you'll see that I have increased quite substantially the digital marketing area earlier. We are going to start some more regional partnerships with Jefferson County and Morgan County. To try to bring people here regionally, because you get more bang for your buck whenever you spend as a region. More money behind the power, power behind the money. We did some recent ads in DC area. That was our focus. We did some digital marketing there at the Dulles area, as well as the metro, metro train stops. We've gotten some people here from that. A lot of those ads targeted them back to the state website, which then targeted them to our websites, Jefferson, Berkeley County. This year, we're going to still partner with the state, but we're going to go out on our own as a region, pool our money to bring those people directly back to our website. Sort of go on our own a little bit, step out. So we have a great relationship with Jefferson County, Annette over there. We're partners in crime. So great thing for us. It's a great thing for our region. And some other things that we're doing, visitor ship itself is down. Well, actually, it's not. In our area, it's good. It's up a little bit, not substantially. I think we're going back to the numbers that we were pre pandemic, because we had a big post pandemic boost. And I think people are sort of gotten comfortable with going back into the big cities. And so we're going back to the numbers that we were for the pandemic. Still good. We were growing. I see us continuing to grow. That's why you see a little bump up in the numbers that I put. Budget mention. Not a substantial debt, mostly to account for some of the hotels that have come online that weren't accounted for in our last budget. Hopefully, it will come to fruition, and we'll be hired. We're holding our own, as far as tourism goes, the rest of the state. Up and down, depending on where you are, the big cities. Some are down, like Charleston and Huntington. Some are up. Smaller counties in the area and the state are struggling a little bit, because they're more interior. We're very fortunate to be where we are. We're right on 81. So our big selling point here in the county is 81, which is, we're right in the middle of the Eastern Panhandle. We're sort of the heart of the Eastern Panhandle. And Martinburg itself is the heart of Berkeley County. So we get that traffic coming in. We're a great sleeper location. We're people traveling from Canada, going south, or south going north. So we're a great stop. We're at least an overnight stay, possibly more. We are sort of a day tripper's dream. If you live in the DC area, the mid Atlantic area, a few hours away, they'll come and stay overnight here. They will do what they can do here. Whether it's hiking, or fishing, or whatever they want to do. And then they can stay here, and then they can venture out to the other, which is what we push a lot. We'll send people to Hagerstown, we'll send people to Winchester, we'll send bigger people to DC, as long as they stay here. And they do. Most of the people live in the cities. They don't care about hours. They don't care about how long it is. They just want to experience. That's what we're pushing here in our areas, experience But everything is good. We have a new board, new board president, new board vice president. Board president now is Roger Engel. Vice president is Greg Jones. So Tracy, who was the president, is still on the board. For another year, she probably. Have a good, strong board. We got a new, new member, Emily, Emi Lu, who was up here, I guess, last month. And she brings to the, to the tables in agrotourism, because she is like that. Looking forward to work with her and pushing our agrotourism. You know, we're holding strong. Everything is good so far. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to entertain, if I can.
I have one. Or not a question, but just a comment. We are going to dedicate and open the first park. There's going to be a Civil War battlefield site in Berkeley County. And we're really working hard with the Shenandoah Valley Battlefield Foundation to create a lot more sites in Berkeley. There's a tremendous history here at the Civil War. And we're just asking for your full support from the CVB to help with this. We think it could be a tremendous resource and visitation draw for our community. While they're here at Harpers Ferry, or here at Sharpsburg, they could make it part of their tour. So we're going to be reaching out to you more, maybe in the future, to help with some of these projects. But it's, it's headed in the right direction. And we think we just had the tip of the iceberg, hopefully, on this. I think it'd be a big boost for us tremendously.
I think it's, I've, I've known about that. And I think it's exciting for our area. Because a lot of the people who come here are Civil War buffs. You know, a lot of historians come here. Because this place is, as you know, rich in Civil War history and Revolutionary War history. I think it'd just be another diamond in the cap.
It's going to be the Hoax Run Battlefield, the first one. And it's going to be an actual park as well. But it's going to be also a recognized battlefield site with all the interpretive exhibits and all to explain the battle that took place there. So we really want your support on this tremendously. I know people on your board obviously are already in tune with it.
Sure, absolutely, absolutely.
Well, obviously, you know, the agrotourism is, is huge. And then hopefully, working to get the more eligible, and having less obstacles for wineries and distilleries. You know, that's a market that we're missing out on greatly. Have worked very hard on the last few years to be able to try to open that market up. We have a lot of people that come here and stay, but then maybe they'll go back over into Loudoun, to Fairfax County to go to the wineries. So we want to get them here. We know the number one goal is to get someone here. The proven record, if we can get people to visit West Virginia, they will come back. They typically love coming here. And so I know there's been a lot of work done in your all's offices to track, you know, people through their usage of their cards or cell phones. So we know who's coming here, and try to attract those people there. And just one closing thing, my daughter lives in DC. She lives right off K Street. She's getting on the metro the other day, and she sends me a picture. And it was a Jefferson County CVB. It was a Harpers Ferry thing. So, you know, hopefully, if that hotel ever gets off the ground down there, and have that dedicated train service, and that'll only be good for ours, too.
Absolutely. That's, that's the way that Annette and I both look at it. It's a regional thing.
It is a regional thing.
Just get people here.
Yeah.
Get them out here as easily as possible.
We can get them here, and they'll come back. It's proven.
Absolutely. And as far as, as the ABC laws and whatnot. Yeah, we've been talking to Delka Clark about a lot of things.
He's worked very hard on that.
He has.
He's worked very hard.
He's a champion for tourism, and he's a champion for.
Yeah. And the wineries are huge. We have to be able to make those happen. I mean, I hope we haven't missed a boat on that. But, you know, they still bring a lot of people to Loudoun, Fairfax.
It does. And they do. And I think if we can just get on board, period. I think it just, just be that much more that, that people can do. More money coming in.
You have a good relationship with Chelsea?
Yes.
Would you encourage her, we're lobbying to try to get through tourism, a land item for Civil War investment in Civil War battlefield sites through her department. And if you could put a good word in for us, we would appreciate that. The state would actually designate some money towards this attempt to increase this, this project. So I'd appreciate that if you could do that.
We're supposed to go down for Tourism Day, it's next Tuesday.
Yeah.
Depending on the weather or whatnot. I'm, I'm failed to mention a couple of other things.
This Tuesday coming, or the next one?
The next one.
The next, this, next, well, this Tuesday coming up.
11th.
Yes. There's some of the grants that we've also given out, you know, Main Street, the Boys and Girls Club, the, the American Legion Tournament, baseball tournament, the Apple Harvest, and some other ones. You know, we try to be winners in the community. We're a part of the community, even though we're marketing outside of our area primarily. But if it's, if it's an event driven opportunity, that has the potential to bring people here, they can come to us, go to our website. We have our grants on our website. I'd be glad to submit it. And I can push it on to our Board of Directors.
And our hope is, it wouldn't have to be a first time event. It would be one like the Apple Harvest, Susan over there, that brings in a lot of people every year.
Now, we have a, no, we have a continuation.
That's wonderful.
It's more like a support. It's more like a support grant.
That's really needed.
It helps to support the event.
Yeah, that'd be great, yeah, we need that, we need that, we encourage that.
I believe there's more of the other grants that are here, that are in the pipeline right now, for events that have gone on, and they've grown and grown and grown, now they're to the level where they need to go push further, and there's like a $30,000 grant. It's a limited number of grants, limited number of issued grants per year, but it's for people who have proven themselves, or nonprofits who have proven themselves, feel that it's a great event and it's growing, and it's good for our area.
All right, Jimmy, got anything?
Nope.
Ace D.
Just film stuff's going good, got one film starting February 20 something, and now they were going to do one, they're doing three films and going to trial for a Netflix series, so some stuff coming.
Has the tax credit helped any of that?
Well, that's a big push.
Yeah, it brought it back, a lot of people didn't even talk to us.
Right, until they saw the tax credit.
It was in effect.
Because it went away, it went away for like two or three.
Yeah, and because it's back, they came to our table, said, we heard it was back, we went on, their second year that it's back, we feel okay, it's going to stay.
I think it'll stay now, I think it's proven itself.
I think so too.
I talked to Patrick a little bit about it too, about the infrastructure credits that we talked about, and he just told me to get the numbers on paper, so I talked to Dave, and he's supposed to be consolidating that and getting a presentation for the governor, so if we get him behind pushing the infrastructure credits, that might go through.
We have people who are looking at our area to do sound studios and things like that, so that's what the ultimate goal is, because that's what was happening when it was in place the first time, and then they pulled it whenever they pulled the credit.
There was literally one person driving that bus to.
One person driving that bus.
It was a big setback, they're five years.
They went to New Zealand.
Yeah, because they were ready to build a soundstage and everything, and that's where the infrastructure credits come in, if we could get somebody like, that old Kmart out there could be a huge soundstage and bring a lot of revenue and a lot of films and mini-series and things like that, because when they can't film outdoors, they can be filming indoors, you know.
They use our local businesses.
Yeah, hotels, they fill up the hotels.
Okay, Mark.
Good stuff, thank you, Mark.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Next up, Beverly Van Meter, CCAP blows and fishes. I see you brought your good friend Doug Montgomery with you.
I'm Beverly Van Meter. I'm Lee Fleming, I'm the new president of the board, and Beverly's no longer on the board, so.
Well, welcome.
And this is Doug Montgomery, our past president.
I was here with Beverly last year as the incoming president, and Beverly is, she was the, we did past president, so now I have the honor of being the past president, and Lee indeed is the new president. All the articles, papers, we have.
I don't know if they're or not.
On the front page.
I saw it.
A very nice article out.
I did see that, actually.
As opposed to the previous speaker, we are indeed asking for money, and I guess one thing he had made a point of, he said, our proximity to the Washington DC area is to them an advantage. Fortunately, to us, while we're looking for, of course, our grant goes all to rental assistance, homeless, and those individuals coming up and visiting and coming up and moving from the Washington area, that's what affects housing prices drastically. I'm a real estate broker, I've watched it over the last, definitely, the local people, especially the distance. But the rentals are noted. I'm going to turn it over to Lee and let her.
Ma'am, what was your last name again, I'm sorry?
Fleming, Lee Fleming. Yes, oh, we have. So first of all, we want to thank you for the $5,000 last year, that was very helpful, it helped keep about seven families, additional 30 days while they worked out their budget, figured out another place to live, worked with their landlord, whatever it took to keep them from being homeless, so we really appreciate that. This year, we're asking for 7,500, and the reason is that rental prices have, according to Zumper, which is a website where you can find apartments, rental costs in this area have gone up 3%. We've had a, the past year has been, back at the beginning of this year, has been super busy, and we always, we have a set budget for each month of how much we're able to give, and we run out of money by the 15th of each month. And our clients only can get rental assistance once every five years, so there's a lot of people out there who find themselves ready to be evicted or behind in their rent, and so, and we are the only, or the, I believe we're the only, if not at least the biggest, I guess I should say, organization that gives rent in this area. We give more money away for rent than DHHR or any other organization, so we're the only place for people to go if they're about to be evicted. And so, what else can we add?
That's about it, I mean, that represents a small portion of our overall budget.
Right, our overall budget for this year is $128,000, and so.
Just for rent.
Just for rent, and so, that 7,500 would certainly help, we get most of our support from the public, we do get several grants, and, but, you know, we need every penny to help keep people in their homes and reduce homelessness, which we know is a big problem around here. So, do you have any questions?
You are now at the Otterbon Church.
Yes, we're in the basement of Otterbon United Methodist Church, we've been there, we're going on our second year, it'll be two years in March, yeah, it's been a great setup for us.
The Neighbor Investment Program.
Yes.
Explain that a little bit.
I'm sorry?
Explain that a little bit.
Oh, the.
Said it generated $50,000.
Yeah, NIP, okay, NIP is a state program where we had to apply to get NIP credits, and what happens is, people, individuals will make a donation to CCAP, and then that money is matched through NIP, through, I'm sorry, well, it is matched, but I mean, they get, I'm saying that wrong, okay, they get tax credits for the money they give to CCAP.
At 50%.
At 50%, right.
So if they give a donation of $5,000, they get a $2,500 federal state tax credit?
Yes, state tax credit, so if they owe the state $25, it's a credit right off their bill to the state. So there's several nonprofits in this area, well, across the state, that receive NIP credits, and we're one of them. And we use that money, is that mainly for just the general budget? General budget, yeah, fund that covers everything, food, rent, utilities, all the different services we provide.
I know there's a lot of folks that depend on you, and I'm certainly not ignoring you, we're going through your numbers that you submitted and the information you submitted, that's, I don't mean to be rude-looking, but I'm just.
No, that's fine.
Scanning here.
You're looking at our budget, is that what you?
I went through it last night, but it's a lot of stuff that we've looked at in the last few hours.
Do you always lodge them in hotel motels, is that right?
We do not, we don't, no, no, no.
Where do you lodge them?
We don't lodge them anywhere, what we're doing is keeping them in their homes for an additional 30 days.
So they can stay in their home.
Yes.
They literally apply with us, we, they have to have an eviction notice from the landlord. Do you just keep them in their home? Contact the landlord direct, landlord has to agree, they will with this funding be allowed to stay, minimum of 30 days where they are, continue that existing. There may be cases where at the end of the 30 days, there is no other solution, and they still may have proved, but I think the vast majority is honest, that gives them 30 days either to get back to work, or a health problem, to get a health problem, back to work.
Find another place to live.
But that's your limit for each recipient, is that 30-day thing?
Right.
Right.
And once every five years?
Once every five years.
And there's actually a process, they go first.
What about actual homeowners, is there assistance for them, if somebody's like right on the edge of, so you have to be a.
I don't know, I feel like it's always rent.
Yes.
We don't, we just do rent, yeah.
Because I, part of it is, they, we've got income guidelines, so we're working with the bottom 30% of the, for the count.
The most of them can't afford it.
If they're unable to buy a home.
Would exceed that, sure.
They're at an elevated stage.
How's the other?
They can't have lost their job and be in a dire situation, but when we concentrate on.
Most people think of you feeding people and that, and how's that phase of your thing going well?
Yes, that's going well, that's the majority of what we do.
Right.
But again, we've been just really slammed, super busy, busier, you know, every year it just, we see more and more people, new people, people who maybe we saw five or six years ago, and now they're coming, maybe they had gotten, you know, their finances under control, now they're back, I mean, yeah, our, every year our budget keeps going up and we keep having more, and, yeah.
Can I ask a question about the food side of it, I know that's not why you're here, but is that a USDA program, is that a West Virginia Food Bank program, where does that come from, is that a local operations with grocery, how does that work?
The majority of the food that we give away is donated, from churches, individuals, you know, food drives by companies or organizations, we, and then from just financial donations, we buy food that way, we have some grants that pay for the food, we do have an affiliation with the Mountaineer Food Bank, which is USDA food, and so we get, you know, it varies on how much we're allowed to get, but.
That comes all the way from Braxton County, doesn't it?
Yeah.
We just did our pickup at the end today.
Yeah, we get it once a month.
First Thursday of the month.
And you go pick it up?
No, tractor trailer comes up, they actually, we meet them, all the different organizations in Berkeley County.
Okay.
We meet their tractor trailer at Independent Bible Church, in the big back parking lot, if you've ever been there.
Yeah, yeah.
They offload, and we come in with our trucks or whatever, and then we take what our allotment for the month is for them, this, today, we got 1,600 pounds, which.
Isn't a lot.
Probably won't last us a week.
No, 1,600 pounds sounds like a lot, but it's not.
But still, most of your food comes from church donations and monetary donations from.
People, yes, yeah, and grants, yeah.
The, a lot of other places, we do have, when you go to the grocery store and hit the button when you're signing out, it says, do you want to round up in order to contribute? But when it says Food Bank, usually that's us, so it funnels through, so you got to get out with.
With Martins.
Grocery stores and that, we could tap, but a lot of it is, we get an order from Target once a week, they clean out, and bananas, pineapples, apples, a whole bunch of stuff, and it's perfectly good, it's not outdated in any way.
But it's almost outdated, it doesn't last long.
It's getting close.
Yeah, right, right, and we get.
It's just finally getting ripe.
Yeah, right, ready to make banana bread.
It's great that you have those corporate partners too.
Yes, Panera, we get bread from Panera, and Martins from their bakery, uh-huh.
Well, it's good to know they're not putting it in the dumpster anymore.
That's right, yeah.
Because a lot of those places used to throw in the dumpster.
Oh, there was like a lawsuit about, you know, giving the food to other organizations if they were going to throw it out in the dumpster.
Right.
But I think there was a liability thing that happened, that it kind of stopped it for a while.
That's true.
You know, that's sad.
Throw it away instead, so you don't get sued.
Yeah.
We appreciate what you all do, believe me, and we'll help you the best we can, believe it.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, good seeing you, Doug.
You too.
See you, Doug.
Thank you very much.
Yep. Next up, Susan Snowden, President of the Mountain State Apple Harvest Festival, welcome.
I was wondering, I'm glad to see you.
Slow, deliberate is the way I prefer to say it, I've had two knee replacements.
Was it hip or knee, I couldn't remember.
Two knees, and due to a undiagnosed until after the fact genetic issue, I ended up with a foot drop, bad, so I still have some neuropathy, and I'm working through it, let's put it that way. So on behalf of the Mountain State Apple Harvest Festival, we appreciate the support you give us, if we could have some financial support, it would be helpful. This year is going to be a little bit of a rebuilding for us, I'll go through some numbers first, we don't take tickets to most events, so the big events, you pay to get in, and then you have free rein of whatever you want to partake in, including the rodeo. Based upon my calculations, based upon our financials, I believe that we have between 4,500 and 5,000 people at the.
Two-day arts and crafts event. That has been a really nice location. We're having things there, but it certainly has lots of parking, it has lots of bathrooms, and for us, and the fact it has a kitchen, it is a good thing. I believe we had about 250 people at the meet and greet, which was done in conjunction with courses, and that was free to the public, they could walk up, meet Frankie Mugges, Christian Rose, get pictures taken, I mean, it was great, it was, I was there for a lot of that, and it was folks that probably would not have paid, had paid, and so that was a, that was a good thing to do. And then I believe we had about 2,000 people, we offered a request to the city, okay, the city asked for enforcement. So we do offer a lot of our events, one of the things that we, probably this year is you want some purpose present, do signage, we'll help people get to the fairgrounds, that kind of thing, probably need to upgrade our signage, probably need to upgrade our banners that we line now up and down all the streets. And food that allowed us to get double the fun the last time when we were. Fixing those, but I think that we're probably going to need those. This year, we are opening up our Fall Ball Classic, and that is yet to run at a, a bunch of an event, a couple of years off the ground, but these are, how many was it, some athletes from five counties that were at Fall Ball Classic, baseball, festival, this year we're opening it up to softball, basketball, so avail, however, last time when they saw how many young men were in, baseball classic, we have some parents step up and say, hello, we're going to. You notice, and if you've been around for a while, you know that we used to be funded completely by the profit from our service, those organizations have had difficulty maintaining, but they've brought us from their ability to support us, and so now, every member of the board is responsible for an event, as you know, we do not have any executive director, but I told them this year. But with that said, to operate in thanks of a profit, to turn payload into instead of a thank, and that's how we're funding our other, I think our sponsors, they do come, but they also. So our budget's high, but there's been. We have a few of us, every member of that board, for myself, they have their own commitment, we're not professed, helping us out with people, I'm not sure if their employees, I thought they may help us run on movement, I'm not sure, so thank God for them, but then, parade is probably one of the biggest amounts, telling you if we could find some threat, it would be great, but so far, that thing is run by about five family members that. It takes serious. All day. Threatened. For no reason at all, because he didn't want to parade on the street. First, it's amazing. Yeah, they keep on doing it because people love it, right? Everybody loves it. That's why we do it. It's important for our agriculture. We do get support from. Vision of cultural. Questions about the events?
No, it's a, it's a big bite to take.
Corporate sponsors.
That's. You're not going to see, don't have anything.
Other than that, yeah.
Things around here.
Macy's parade, that makes sense, doesn't it? Thanksgiving Day parade? This would be the apple harvest.
We have tried. Got ideas. Boy, we'd be glad to, you know, hey, I'm not trying, I'll go. Pass. But we did have Rock Hill for a while and. So that was just.
And Rotary's not doing the sports breakfast anymore, though.
So the pancake breakfast, sports breakfast ended up being one where they couldn't even sell it to. So we took it over, moved it to the fairgrounds where we don't have any rental other than what we're already paying to the fairgrounds for the use of the facility. We have a kitchen there. Then we use the people power from Rotary, the morning Rotary, to come down and do all the cooking, just like they always had. But there's no real venue, Steve, for a sports celebrity to get up and speak. We'd love to have that. We have lots of connections, fabulous sports celebrities. They are inspirational. But finding a facility in any of the three counties that's big enough, host some kind of a. Public speaking event is also extremely good. Because we're using airborne Friday night to do our coronation. Has to. But if we could find someplace to house two people, charge a minimal fee, underwrite that cost a little bit, then we're never going to make money. But if we could get someone to speak, that would be great. We do have meet and greets with athletes. Going, it's amazing. One. Because sometimes they'd be twenty dollars. So that's free and all of it's at the fairgrounds.
I got to sit on the street on King Street before the parade started and talk to Brooks Robinson one day for twenty minutes before the parade started. One of the big thrills of my life.
I was, I was a young man and met him like I was a little guy. I remember that year he was here and I got to meet him.
So back in the day, I'll tell my birthright story, February R and R and the Apple Harvest folks did a telethon. Came up here and I sat with him at high school. Did phone calls, seen his telephone company. Had phones at McDonald's when it was. Sat there and did a phone call for hours with him and he was a fantastic.
Awesome dude.
Yeah. Yes. We've had some really good, Mark Mosley, Christian, was an excellent inspiration. Ralph Sampson, not a real well-known anymore athlete, but he came back and spoke and talked about how his failure and injury. Pro ball arena ended up changing his life and, you know, he belongs in. So Rocky Blyer was. But we need someplace that's a family work. I think they've come just.
Hear the stories, surely.
Or define a convention center.
Yeah. Anybody else have anything for Susan?
Good to see you.
Yeah, thank you. Guys, you know, I've been with this event since late.
That's awesome. I appreciate your service.
Preston's service. And then when I came back from law school, I got Preston's. So, but I also run events, too. I mean, I've run, you know, right now, Teresa McCabe, W D Medicine and I. By the way, if you come to that, it is, we get the agricultural. Have a state of the agriculture. For about fifteen. But in his stead because he's. So great way for people.
Does Brad get voluntold to do stuff?
Always. My whole family does. They don't get a choice.
Don't get a choice.
They are voluntold.
Voluntold?
Yes. That's extended family, believe me. Numerous of them have run events over. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan.
Thank you.
Good to see you. I'm glad you're doing better.
I am. Thank you.
Next up, Tim Zaire, Community Corrections Director. And your Deputy Director.
How's everybody doing?
Good. How y'all?
The numbers are starting to run together.
I bet. Yes. Every year I fumble around a little bit. Information after this year with you all. And what was helpful, what was, I've had a lot of data. So I'm not a PowerPoint guy, but. Powerpoint's a public media. We put this together the last couple of weeks. First time I've used it to give a presentation, so. I don't know if any of it is going to be, I think some of it will be helpful, but. Certain pieces. All one. I'll add it for future. But I do hear Nate. Oh, okay. That's just a picture of our, of our staff there in front of the new addition. That was taken just.
That the Day of the Dedication?
It is.
Yeah, I thought it was, yeah.
How many staff do you have, Tim?
Seventy-ish. Roughly. Okay. I'm, I'm going to talk to you first about the Day Report Center. So I'm, as you all know, I'm responsible for the Day Report Center program. Day Report Center is the largest. So what I put together here, and I don't love the way this turned out, but pie charts in the bottom is what I'm. On the left there is, is last year's budget. And on the right is my budget, or my budget request for this year. Personnel line, that may not be exact. Close that thing. That we've added. As in right now, I want to, I think the one on the right should, should be. I don't know why this. Oh, it did. I'm sorry. I'm looking at the wrong number. On the left, the total budget last year was four million. Plus the injuries back over the past twelve months. Find his increase and that's what we're. That personnel line should be. But I'm only requesting some increases. In a couple of areas. Professional services being one. Challenge for me to corrections because every September, October, I find out about the federal grants that we. Money that I can access grant funded expenses. So that number's hard for me to protect. And that's what happened this, this past year. I projected. Sixty thousand, sixty thousand, three hundred and eighty-seven dollars and I am roughly at sixty percent. That is because of monies that we were, there's some federal grants that I've been able to push me over. So I'm requesting a slight increase in professional services. And back up contracted services. Forty of, of, of that line covers our, our, our drug screening, Bedwood, out of drug screening, Day Reports. So that price point is the lion's share of our contracted service. We also pay for our electronic health record out of contracted service. The, the record that we use for our Medicaid. I believe there's some basically that by hand. There were cumbersome, all sorts of errors get made, so that's well spent money. Professional services, back to that point, we're over a bit because we've got extra money for Roxford House funding and some Hyda funded technicals and such. We also pay for our SCAM monitoring, professional services. Pay for our, our farm chem testing. And we will be moving forward, paying for some, what's called DDS drug screening, dried, dried blood spot drug screening. Just working with a provider. As that service is a far more accurate form of drug screening that we can use it to pack up. More expensive in drug screening, but. Give you a bit of data regarding activity at the Day Report Center. Our staff facilitate about a hundred and seventeen hours of group TV. Approximately eighty hours of individual therapy, about two thousand drug screens on a weekly basis, a hundred and fifty individual peer coach sessions. And we're, we're talking about twenty-five hundred miles a week providing track. This is some information regarding the referrals that we receive. On the left there is last fiscal year, twenty-three, twenty-four. As you can see, we got a total of seven hundred and seventy-three referrals for the year. Hundred and eighteen of those folks. And on the right, that's, that's data from July first, twenty-four through December thirty-first, twenty-four. Last six months. The tractor far exceed the number of referrals. Magistrate, our largest referral source. Followed by. Was last year, followed by the H H. Our two new referral sources that we added by program.
How new is the DUI program?
Less than a year.
Started the program in October, November, something like that.
Six, seven months.
Yeah.
You're pleased with the magistrate courts cooperation and assigning these people, referring these people?
Yes.
Satisfied with that?
Yes, sir.
Did you have a DUI program before?
We did not.
It's new.
There, there were so many of our folks that were referred to us through the courts that we needed to participate in a DUI program. They were going to have to, having to go to different. For different purposes, so thought it would be beneficial to them if we provide the vet service in-house. That's how they do it.
So you do the blow and goes and stuff? Or like what, what does consist of the DUI program?
So when, when a person, when their licenses were revoked by the state for a DUI or. They're charged, the state requires them to participate in by program, eligible to get their license back. Some of those people use the blow and go in addition to the treatment. It's kind of cookie cutter treatment. The state requires all DUI providers to, to use in curriculum, hours. So levels that folks. Participate in. Level one is, is eighteen hours of group therapy. That's to be facilitated by a master level commission. Level two is the eighteen hours of group therapy, plus I want to say it's ten hours of individual therapy. And then level three, by course, individual therapy plus after this, our intensive outpatient quite a bit of treatment they have to go through. Level threes are people that, that have multiple DUIs or DUI with bodily injuries.
You, you still previously had like home arrest people that were there for DUIs, but they had to go to their classes somewhere else? Is that what it was?
Yeah.
Okay. Cause I knew one of the first people that went through your program way back when and I knew his was all DUIs and he was on house arrest and reported to you guys and all that, but.
He probably was coming up for, coming to us for substance abuse treatment and test monitoring and then having to go to one of the providers for the DUI class.
Got you.
He now do the DUI class now.
Okay.
His federal probation's new as well.
Yes. We just started serving federal probation. Effective October first.
And you're reimbursed to the federal government for what you, what you provide per?
Yes.
Or applicant?
Yes. That's a position that the commission granted blessing for us to hire a therapist to. That work. Not filled that position yet because the numbers have not justified it yet. So I have, one of my other therapists that are. They sort of indicated, not sort of indicated to us that we had. Number is slowly fine. I'll show you those numbers here in a minute. Got them on another slide. Here they are. No, that's not it. I'll show you those numbers in a minute. Any other questions about referrals?
I have a question back on page one. Building rent. Is that to the county to pay for all the power, electric?
The debt service.
The debt service.
Okay. Frequently about the success of the Day Report. I don't know if any of you familiar with the national recidivism rates according to National Institute of Justice. Forty-four percent of inmates released from prison take prison return within. And return to the, seventy-seven percent return for five years. I believe I'm the only RC director in the state that does this. I run our recidivism text for our program graduates. So I can, it's the only way to. Have a very clear idea of our, of our success. Lots of ways to measure our success that aren't exactly measurable. A measurable way for us to track our success and then to compare with natural averages. So as of October twenty-twenty-four, and I, and I go five years post-graduation. Folks drop off after they've graduated for five years. So five years, our recidivism rate for our graduates is twenty-six. Carry that with seventy-seven. I'm pleased with that number. It actually increased a bit this year compared to the last. It wasn't.
Oh, it's closer to seventy.
But it's still very low compared to the natural average. I'm pleased with that.
That's shocking, that national average. Is that high?
Yeah. Um, so this is a snapshot of the, of the grants and the revenues that we've been able to generate. Have a couple of Hyda grants, our adult program and the adolescents program. Corrections and J R fifty CC, J R I grants are state grants. A D C, E J Ecosap. Are federal grants. Western Diddy Cosap is also a state grant. And that total is one million, eight hundred and eight thousand, nine hundred and fifty-five dollars and thirty-nine cents. Here in that, the revenues that we've generated since July first, twenty-twenty-four, the second, first six months. Our D H H R, Medicaid billing, eighty-six. That totals, multiplied it by two because that's, that's what I expect this fiscal year. Side one point three million. Find our, our grants and revenues. Over three. That we bring back to help offset. Cost to. And take it to math this way. We've averaged thirty participants last year, something three hundred and four. Couple right now, but our average for last year has been about three hundred. And if the jail is average cost of fifty-four dollars a day, that math. And if the jail is average cost of $54 a day, that math, dollars, track our budget, four and a half million, add on the revenues we bring back, about how much savings. That's just the financial part, like it's always important.
So many of our community members are benefiting from living in the community while receiving treatment and supervision, they're connected with their families, they're working. It's far better off for our community for these programs to exist than it is to try and incarcerate them all. We wouldn't be able to incarcerate them all. There's, it would really be an ugly picture in our county if it weren't for these programs. The jail's full as it is.
And that's just the day report saving, John?
Yes. Any other questions about day report? Any, any data points that you wonder about or would like me to add to this for future presentations?
That's the most important one for us right there. Hopefully the numbers will keep growing.
Yes, sir.
Well, the decline in participants, but the numbers increase in our ability to control.
In fact, you got such a low percentage that returned at some point.
Well, decline in participants, I see it was one year, a half year.
Well, no, but I'd say I would like to see.
Oh, yeah, I got you.
That's what I was saying.
Same. Home confinement program. We began supervising the home confinement program January of 2018, and these numbers are based on calendar year. So you can see how those numbers have increased over the years. And one number up there that I'd like to draw your attention to, if you look at the fees collected column, you can see it started off 76, and then 99, and then 77, and then 88, and then 87, and then it went up a little bit to 107, but then look at the jump from 2023 to 2024.
Because the home confinement officers are really proud of going out there, where that the hundreds were able to pay their fees or pay. So that number quite a bit, so brought back 240,000, really offset the cost of the.
Those numbers are the different individuals that have been home confined, so the total of individuals was 372.
Those are the number of people that had a GPS monitor on their ankle?
Didn't matter how long they had it, but just some point.
Correct. Some of it could have been a day, some of it could have been a month.
A whole year, yeah.
So Tim, in 2024, the 84 that were revoked, is that just people that just couldn't get with the system, couldn't deal with the system, and they had to go back in jail?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, they violated the terms of.
Didn't play well with others and had to go back to the.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, then you got completed, and then there's a gap there between total and what, that mean they're still in the program, I guess?
Yes, so if you, if you added 84 with 155 and then subtracted that number to 372.
Better still.
Still hooked up in the program at that point.
And that number's always in flux because you probably got people coming off.
It changes daily.
Right.
Yeah.
It changes daily.
And for John's sake, we're still at seven correctional, and one supervisor?
I think it's.
I think it was, I thought it was seven and one.
Eight people totally work over there for that.
They just do home confinement?
I think we.
Are they considered probation officers?
They're similar to probation officers.
Are they allowed to be armed?
Yes. They're law enforcement officers.
That's pretty recently new.
I think it was 2020, and that law was passed. We actually realized that, though, years or so after first operating the group. That title was not, you were probably down there at that point, yeah.
Yeah, we were shocked, we were like, what?
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, there's things you just don't know until you know, and then you're like, we've got to fix this.
Right. And we've learned that there's roughly 70 or 80 home confinement officers throughout the state who aren't, ones of sheriff's deputies are obviously law enforcement, but all the other home confinement officers throughout the state, only realized it until.
It was an aha moment.
Yeah. So if you do the math there, jail cost is not for the home confinement program in 2024, calendar year 2024, it's in dollars. Questions about home confinement?
And I think the range is about, you always say is 120 to 150 at any given day, it ranges usually in that range, how many people?
It's over 130.
Yeah, to 100, maybe max.
137?
Yeah. Right now, it's 137.
Yeah. It's, it's just, ever since it started, it's just been a slow, steady.
It averages out, John, to about 20 people per officer.
Per officer, yeah. Yeah, and I would prefer to not exceed 25 per officer, once you go on beyond that, level of supervision provided against.
Case load gets too heavy?
Yeah, it's my preference that it doesn't go above that. We've got some room here, we've got some room. All right. New service program. This data is from July 1st through January 30th. New service program, still have, forward to it, growing in span with IT to have a really nice place. I think they got to that feature together, but I want to spend. Day, distant future, I hope to come and show you the map feature, and that way you can have a visual of all the roads in Berkeley County that have, some sites that have been hung up, photos and such. Folks that have come through, gotten a cheap program, parenting life skills classes, some of their hours, things like that, but for now, I can tell you, we've gotten 160 referrals, most from magistrate court, some from drug court, some from circuit court. 6,880 hours have been completed in the top five work locations, or roadside litter program, Berkeley County Recycling Centers, Goodwill, and then a variety of nonprofits.
There's a vacuum thing working pretty well. Good, we need another one.
It's a lot easier than bending over.
We need another one, don't we?
The West Virginia First Foundation funding. Recovery Resource Center, they stay busy over there, this is the last six months, they've had 243 walk-ins, over 1,000 home counseling conferences. Seven to any programs. Had peer coaching sessions with 25 individuals, 1,243, close to a variety of community resources that people contact them looking for, held 117 recovery meetings. The quick response team at the JOTIP program, program. JOTIP is juvenile opioid treatment intervention and prevention program, staff, there are four of them, go into high schools, middle schools, a couple of the other, the other schools there, and they facilitate all type of drugs. And their mission is to, is to fight some of these substances, often with a variety of things. Try to identify someone who are higher risk kids. Perfect world, engage families involved in this. We run adults program, there are not many parents who have been part of this, and that's But they do really good work with the kids, they've seen over 13,000 kids last year.
And who is this again? JOTIP?
It's a grant funded program, it's a federal grant.
That's all handled through your program?
The Resource Center.
Do you work with the Martinsburg Initiative or anything, or any other organizations?
Yes, there's some collaboration there.
And these are your employees that do this, or that do this training to go to the schools and do the training?
Yes, sir.
Wow.
Mr. I can tell you, my wife is a ninth grade health teacher Musliman, and every chance she has, she talks about how awesome the JOTIP program is and how fantastic it is for the service to come to those schools.
Yeah, we preach education, 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 and I mean, it's obviously much easier to teach someone at a younger age and how dangerous these behaviors can be, and the earlier we can get them, and you know, the old DARE program, all that stuff, that stuff's went away, and I agree with you with the vaping, the vaping has become, you know, we almost had cigarettes licked for a while, and then the vaping came out, and now it's bigger than smoking was, and then it's very dangerous because, I mean, THC vapes and, I mean, the dabs and.
Those are these tiny little things.
Yeah, and they're undetectable.
They go in the bathroom and.
Right, there's no smoke, there's no vapor, there's no nothing, and they are, have received a very large dose of THC sometimes.
My daughter does the vaping program through Epic in all the schools, that's her job, that's what she does. I was around all these schools, prevents the vaping. I see Timber Ridge on there, you go to Timber Ridge?
Yes.
Really? That's interesting.
The director of education there?
Yeah.
You got to talk to him a couple of years ago. I'm at Timber Ridge.
I am, my son works there.
Oh.
Yeah, I know several people that on staff up there, or Berkeley County people actually, they live here in Berkeley County. Yeah, but it's a wonderful place for a lot of people, and you know, I didn't realize that he started there, that West Virginia kids go there the same as Virginia kids. It's located, of course, in Virginia, 10 miles on 522 outside of Winchester, but West Virginia kids go there, and they live there year round.
Popo kids?
They live there year round, yeah.
Like kids that live around Popo or up in, no?
Anywhere in the state, they're behavioral kids that come, they live there on campus.
Oh, okay, okay.
Back to other states trying to get in up there, and even house refugees there, if you can believe that, but.
They'd like to.
Yeah.
But it's a month long.
And for now, we're sending them there.
See, this is out 522?
Yeah, 522. If you leave Winchester, go 522, about 10 miles, I'm thinking. There's a Liberty gas station convenience store there is where you turn at the end of the.
Okay.
And STARS, what's STARS?
STARS is the state run.
Okay.
Well, our staff go there and so, it, that report, some of them, all of them, fired as partisan. Some of them are required.
I mean, is the school's choice to have you there?
At STARS?
No, any of those schools, is there a decision to bring you in, each school individually?
We got with them and contacted them and said, hey, we'd like to come in and do this.
Because like, I know Musliman Middle's not on there, Mountain Ridge is, Hedgesville Middle, south, I know it.
Yeah, there's a couple of schools that they're probably getting in the door.
Yeah, because there's six middle schools just in Berkeley County.
These are happy to go to any of them.
Does the city do something for Martinsburg, or they just don't participate? Got some kind of program like this for Martinsburg High School, where they just don't participate?
We were going to Martinsburg High School, we were in there for a couple of years and then.
I would think North Middle could use it too.
Every school could use it.
Absolutely, absolutely. You could staff all that if you had to.
Yes, sir.
Every school, but again.
Yes, sir.
Really? Steve and I meet monthly with the superintendent of schools, we'll have that conversation.
Okay. The quick response team, this data is from its inception, and that was about October of 2020, they've knocked on over 1,000 doors, they've reached 597 survivors, 44% of all survivors we've accepted help of some. That's, that's really. Let me take that back, that's a false statement, I think. Number of people who were contacting EMS to report it over this, it's quite a bit. It is, that can probably tell you better than over 50, hands care, for a period of time, from now around 50, I think it's, I think it's because, I do not believe it overdoses. Oxone is a big. Offset the number. 1-9-1-1, oxone's a, 1-9-1-1. Something that we recently started, we provide the oxone at the. Where it covers the cost of it, you get the oxone, we ensure that you, for our participants, everyone, they get, personally, we got one of the scan hand codes on them now, and we ask people, hey, if you ever need to use this because of an overdose, just scan it and send in a report, snag the note, happened in our, and asking for identifying information, or what's your address, or anything like that, we just want to be able to track the number of times someone overdosed, so that recently started, and we're curious to see if it'll be. I think there'll be some that will, because without something like that, we just don't really have a way to have a good idea of.
And that's still through the health department, but you staff it, correct?
Correct. Health department holds the grant.
Right, and then you staff it for them, yeah.
Harm reduction program, the Resource Center staff go over and run that program, and the numbers are last, 574 people. Close to, the exchange rate for syringes is, IV drug users are absolutely going to get high with the syringe, and if they have to use it, different people, month to month, so desperately active. In their bodies, that's hard to be insane. Have been on reduction program. Minimizes the, and the needle. Treatment of HIV, and has really large price tag attached to it, long runs. Treatment of our resident healthier. Every move they have, acting, every good, talking to them, they're encouraging them to stop for help when they, they, already it's time.
That very solidly is a one for one exchange.
Yes. Yep. So you see the 117% number, there are people that are given, say, they might be given 20 syringes on the, say, following week, they'll bring back 25, because they got some from other places, so some of them are like, whole syringe, they can back and I'll turn it in. That's why that rate is.
Well, I will say our harm reduction policy in this county, and that has been very well run, and that's not, and not always been the case in other areas of the state, so I appreciate that, that it's a solid one for one exchange.
Didn't Charleston, didn't Charleston do away with that harm reduction program, or the needle exchange at one time? Didn't Charleston, didn't Charleston do away with that harm reduction program, needle exchange at one time? About two or three years ago?
There, there was some facilities that had some issues in the exchange rates, and they were getting 20 needles for one needle. I mean, so, so there was some, there was some operational problems and some other, and it was, I don't think it was counties, it was the municipalities. And some of those municipalities came under heavy scrutiny for their programs because the fallout of it is, is there's needles everywhere.
Yeah.
And, and so you start to see this, as that happened in Putnam and Cabell County, and it happened in the city of Charleston, and, and I think maybe Wood, maybe, maybe Parkersburg, but don't hold me to that, but there was. Regardless of who it was, there was municipalities that were not, they were not running those programs how they were intended to be run, and there was fallout from that, and that's typically what always happens when the pendulum swings too far one way, it always swings back too far the other way.
Now, the purpose of the programs aren't just syringes.
Yes.
They can take them and get rid of them.
Sure.
They have to use some other responsibilities that should. And give you these, but you gotta bring them back in the exchange. Positive too. Also to. Our Resource Center, we're in a program of exception, every service. Every service is coordinated with it. All the rest of the staff there are great. Any other questions?
Oh, you have an employee request there?
Yes, sir. We would like to formalize the title of. Technician. Because we have six different. Automated collection goes along with that. There's different types of drug screening that we. We're going to track eight or four. Kind of, kind of reposition. So. Drug screening technician to classify that, what is it? 10. That's not requesting a new position. That is placing one of the drug screening technicians, I have four, replacing one of those. Like increases. And then I have a couple of staff members requesting.
These increases will happen in the new budget. This is not, this.
Right, yes. I came on board two years ago, and everybody here, this guy and this guy and Gary and HD and I come on and said, whatever Tim wants, Tim gets, right? And I said, there's no way that somebody can be this good, as everybody's telling me he is. I've been here two years now, and he's every bit as good as they told me he was, and what he does for this community is unbelievable, and we just appreciate it greatly.
I can assure you, it's not.
I know that.
There's a whole bunch of people around.
I understand that, but it takes a great leader to make it happen, and we appreciate it greatly.
I appreciate that you're so data driven, because it's really hard to, people can argue their point, they can argue this, you know, we shouldn't be doing this, we shouldn't be doing that. But when you have the data to back it up, and you, you obviously can say, this is what we're doing, and this is how we are literally saving Berkeley County taxpayer dollars by implementing these programs, if not having these programs, then we would be spending the dollars here, 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 and here. So when you have the data to drive that and to back that up, to me, that makes my job and our job easier to express that to the taxpayers of the accomplishments and the successes that are happening over there. Not only is it successful that we're saving taxpayer dollars, we're saving people's lives. We are helping people who are, who are in vulnerable situations, and maybe they put themselves in those vulnerable situations, but regardless, we'll start helping those people.
Yeah, and I, yeah, I, I love having, having people to back up arguments. There's so many other things that we can track and measure, and that's why I'm really glad that. Draper, she's gonna help me start. Like, for instance. Our, our recidivism rate is 26%. We, we can look at every. Every individual arrest that took place over the last year and try to make sense out of why those folks are getting arrested. Or. There's a variety of different things that we can look at and try to improve the program over time. Up in the week. Track. Quite as much time, because I'd love to be able to. A little bit more of it.
There's, uh, there's so much good coming out of, over there. You know, those, those folks, and I've heard you say it, they don't want to be in that position. They don't want that. But I also know that they've taken their families to the end. The families have nowhere to turn. Some families even hope their children get arrested so they can hopefully get help, and that happens a lot. But once they get in that system, then they're referred to you, and then hopefully with your different programs, that they can get healthy again and go back and enjoy the, the love of the family. But you know, they, it's, uh, it's sad. It's sad, and as we continue to grow as a community, your issues are going to continue to grow as well. I mean, it's just a fact of life.
Yeah. I probably sound like a broken record when I say this, but I've done so many, I've been working almost 20 years covering addicts. I have yet to be a heroin addict. Likes their. Trust me, Dave, you do not like their. Not one of these drugs they can. Substances. Want to be able to hang out on one. About you, about to eat. Literally can't enjoy these things. Taken over by, don't like it. Ordinary value, community corrections program. Leverage the legal system to kind of require that they get help. Compare our numbers in our program, David Port Center's a substance abuse. There are numbers with any other voluntarily entered program around here. Night and day, because part of the insanity of addiction is that the average addict is not going to go get help. And that just, it doesn't make sense, but that's just the nature. So there's a lot of value in these programs.
It's important, you know, the, the, the parents and the grandparents that are trying to figure out every day, hoping every day their, their child is alive. And if they can get, if you can get them into these programs, hopefully they can make it out the other end. You can't, you can't, you can't understand what they go through if you haven't experienced it yourself. And it's just a grip on people that's unbelievable. From what I've, and I believe me, I have people close to me have gone through it.
Thank you, and Kate, and all your other team members. The only, only request I have is I'd like to have a tour of the entire facility one day, just, I'll give you a call and say, hey, man, just come over and just show me the whole place. I'd love to see it.
You got a fancy building over there now that he can show off. You like it?
That was a nice article.
We love it.
That we, we love it. We got forwarded to read about the David Port Center. It was a very good article. Right?
Keep it up. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim.
We are right on time.
Oh, wow.
Yeah. We're gonna, we're gonna stay there for. A minute.
I wouldn't, I ain't gonna say that.
I, I think we're close enough that we can recess, let, let the record show there's.
I'll just say, I'll just say this. John, until you see a group of people come in here that needs help.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's a. It's a very difficult situation for a lot of people. Before, there was no place to turn to.
Right.
And quite honestly, Doug and Dan were the drivers of getting this started. Anyway. Let the record show, there is nobody here from the public, and we will take a motion to recess.
I moved that we recessed.
We are in recess.